All right, good evening. It's 6:30. Call the meeting to order.
Thank you. Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Commissioner Joseph?
Here.
Commissioner Stuyvesant is not present yet. Commissioner Vice Mayor Lama?
Here.
Mayor Svechnikov?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, great. If everyone could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Norm will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
Just want to quickly recognize that we have two former mayors in the audience. Maybe not for the best reasons, but I'm happy you're here. So, thank you, former mayor Shoal and former mayor Edelko. Go ahead, Mauricio.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the October 22nd.
Wait, invocation.
Oh, the invocation. I apologize.
Yes, we have Father Argus. Please come up. Welcome.
Thank you for the invitation and greetings from St. Mary Magdalene Parish Community. This prayer is called "The Gift of Dialogue." Lord God, we praise you and glorify you for the beauty of the gift named Dialogue. It is a favorite gift of God, but it is like a stream incessantly gushing within the Spirit of God. Dialogue unties knots, dissipates suspicions, opens doors, resolves conflicts, makes persons greater. It is a bond of unity and the mother of brotherhood. Lord our God, unity of the community, make us realize that our lack of understanding is almost always due to a lack of dialogue. Make us understand that dialogue is neither an argument nor a battle of ideas, but a search for the truth between two or more people. Make us understand that we need each other and that we complement each other. We have something to give and a need to receive. I can see what others cannot, and they can see what I do not. Lord our God, when tension builds up, give me humility so that I will not want to impose my truth by attacking my brother's truth. Make me keep silence when necessary. Make me wait for the other person to finish expressing his truth completely. Give me wisdom to understand that no human being is able to completely possess the truth and that no error or tactlessness is without some truth. Give me common sense to recognize that I can also be mistaken on one or another aspect of truth. Let me be enriched by the other person's truth. Finally, give me the generosity to understand that the other person also seeks the truth honestly and to accept the opinion of others without prejudice and with kindness. Lord our God, give us the gift of dialogue. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. So, we'll go with the mayor's opening message, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We appreciate your attendance and thank you for joining us tonight. Before we begin, there are a few important reminders regarding conduct during our commission meetings. Please ensure all electronic devices are turned off or set to silent mode to maintain the integrity of our proceedings. Mutual respect is the foundation of productive discussions. We ask that everyone remains silent and attentive when someone is addressing the commission. Clapping, applauding, heckling, or any verbal outbursts either in support or opposition of the speaker are strictly prohibited. Any individual wishing to address the commission must fill out a public speaker's card and submit it to the city clerk before the relevant item is announced. Each speaker is granted a maximum of three minutes. Should you exceed this time, the chair will notify you to conclude your remarks. Speak directly to the agenda's points, remain concise, and avoid redundancy. Should an individual speak without the chair's permission or continue speaking after a warning, they may be escorted out of the chambers. It is essential to avoid making impertinent, slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the commission. Such behavior may lead to being barred from future commission appearances unless the majority of the commission members present vote otherwise. The presiding officer may disallow signs or placards in the commission chamber. Please exit the chamber quietly and without disruption. The goal of our meetings is to facilitate public input and participation. However, disruptive or disorderly conduct hinders our collective objective. Individuals who want to speak on an item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to one three-minute comment per item. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or you do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of chambers. In order to maintain orderly conduct and/or proper decorum at these meetings, anyone who interferes with the orderly process of the meetings after a warning may be removed from the meeting and may be barred from further appearance before the city commission as permitted in S. 286-0114, FS, and SS 74-5 and 74-21 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Any necessary removal will be made at the direction of the mayor and will be carried out by law enforcement or designated sergeant-at-arms. It is essential that attendees adhere to these rules of procedure to ensure productive meetings that serve both the public and the city commission. Thank you for your cooperation and understanding.
The first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of the minutes of the October 22nd, 2024 commission meeting.
Take a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is the Order of Business, and we have a couple of changes to tonight's agenda. The first item is a withdrawal of item 9C, which is a resolution authorizing the expenditure for the purchase of a 2025 F-550. Item 9, excuse me, I had it here. 9R has been revised, the resolution itself, and an add-on as item 9Z, which is a purchase of an F-550 from Hawkeye Truck.
Great. Need a motion to approve the change?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, which is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's-
Wait, wait, Mauricio, I'm sorry. Let me just, the changes that were made, do we have those in the back?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so if anyone wants to speak on those, please go ahead and do that. And I'm glad the Commissioner Stuyvesant is here. I just wanted to say congratulations on your election. It's a very nice job. Go ahead, please.
Okay. 7A is an appeal of the Historic Preservation Board's denial of a certificate of appropriateness related to the property located at 344 Atlantic Isle.
So, I'm reading this. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has a public hearing for an appeal to the City Commission of a decision of the Historical Preservation Board denying a special certificate of appropriateness for demolition of a historically designated structure. In this matter, the City Commission sits in a quasi-judicial and appellate capacity. Pursuant to the city's Code of Ordinances, Section 171-4D2, the City Commission shall hear and consider all facts material to the appeal and render a decision promptly. Since this is an appeal, no new facts or evidence may be introduced into the record. Pursuant to Section 171-10 of the city's Code of Ordinances, a decision on an application for a certificate of appropriateness shall be based upon an evaluation of the compatibility of the physical alteration or improvement with surrounding properties, and where applicable, compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standard for Rehabilitation and Guidelines for Rehabilitating Historical Buildings, or any guidelines, policies, or plans adopted or approved by the city. The city's commission's decision must be based upon competent substantial evidence in the record before it, must adhere to the essential requirements of the law, and must provide the applicant procedural due process. At the conclusion of the hearing, the city commission may affirm, modify, or reverse the Historical Preservation Board's decision. Since this is an appeal, we will first hear argument from the applicant and aggrieved party and then from city staff. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to note and reiterate the fact that this proceeding is a little different than what you're used to with your previous interactions with your boards. Typically, your boards, including the HPP, serve in an advisory capacity. In this case, your code, as in most codes that deal with historic designation in that context, provide authority to the HPP to grant or to deny certificates of appropriateness. So, this is not a situation where the board is actually giving you advice on this particular issue, but it's an appeal of their particular decision. So, the board's job is effectively done and complete. So, you're now reviewing this application in what's called sort of a de novo standard of review, where you're looking at the facts and the record anew in order to make a decision based on the standards articulated in the code. So, as you've just mentioned, you have the ability to either affirm, modify, or reverse the board's decision. And as you stated correctly earlier, there's no new facts or evidence to be entered or considered in rendering your decision. It's based on the record that's before you and the argument that you'll hear from council and the city.
Great. Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, can you please swear in those who'll be speaking?
Yes. All those that will be speaking, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. So, before we continue, Ian, give me one second. Does anybody have any ex-party communication that need to be disclosed, including either with the applicant or with the Historic Preservation Board members?
Yes.
Yes, and the contents?
The applicant has given me information about what it is they want to do, and then I just had a conversation with one of the members right before the meeting.
I attended the meeting.
I'm sorry?
I attended the meeting.
Okay, did you have any one-on-one conversations with either the applicant or the board members?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and the contents of the conversations?
With the applicant, a little overview about the application, and also with a former mayor, Norman Edelko.
Yes, and I've spoken with Bud Shoal as well as Norman Edelko.
And the contents of the conversation?
Just some questions-
Okay.
-that were answered.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, good evening. Ian DeMello from the Shugan Law Group, 100 Southeast 2nd Street in Miami, here on behalf of George Shoal and Dionne Domonico, the owners of 334 Atlantic. And we're here tonight requesting reversal of the HPP's denial of the special certificate of appropriateness to demolish the structure at 334 Atlantic for a few reasons. First, because the HPP failed to apply the relevant criteria, they ignored the changed circumstances and the economic hardship faced by the owners. Since purchasing the property in 1993, the owner has invested substantial sums of money and time into repairing and maintaining the structure in accordance with the Historic Preservation Guidelines. However, as over 30 years has passed and the home reaches an age of over 87 years, South Florida's climate is changing, sea levels have risen, and it's now apparent that the residential structure, which is located adjacent to the water, as you can see from the photo there, on the water's edge, and it's exposed to salt air and subject to periodic flooding, it now runs the risk of significant hurricane damage and is structurally unsound. A structural engineer has confirmed that the building is not compliant with today's building code and that efforts to bring the structure up to code and elevate the building will fail. As noted in your own consultant's report that's in the record before you, these are very legitimate concerns for the structure. Now, even since the application was submitted in August of 2023, and yes, we've been at this for over a year now, this process has been going on, the circumstances have only gotten worse. For one example, we only need to look at the two major hurricanes that hit the west coast of Florida this year. As it pertains to this specific property, in 2023, the windstorm insurance was at $120,000 a year. In 2024, the owners received a letter from the insurance company that they can no longer provide windstorm insurance. In other words, the property is uninsurable. I'd like to focus a little bit on the standard of review that's before you because this is the very important part of your job tonight, when you're evaluating the criteria on whether to reverse or approve the HPP's denial. Now, because this is a quasi-judicial hearing, I'm going to adopt and incorporate all the legal arguments set forth in our supplemental notice of appeal and the record from the HPP hearing. Specifically, the staff consultant's report states that the city code does not have any criteria that's specific to demolition. Now, under Florida law, a failure to provide and base a decision on relevant objective criteria violates my client's due process rights. Thus, the HPP decision denying the application based on criteria that does not apply to demolition must be reversed. In other words, if they're applying rehabilitation criteria to a demolition application, that does violate my client's due process rights. In addition, denying the COA and requiring the owners to invest substantial resources to try to repair and elevate a structure that a professional engineer has determined is structurally unsound and cannot be elevated would constitute an unconstitutional taking of my client's property. Now, this is another important point to make because your own code recognizes there's a definition for economic and undue hardship, and it recognizes that an exceptional financial burden amounts to a taking of private property, and that is what would occur today if you do not reverse the HPP's denial of the COA. It's also significant that when my client, Mr. Shoal, purchased the property in 1993, it was under the jurisdiction of Miami-Dade County. And Miami-Dade County expressly recognized that demolition of historic sites would be considered on the basis of documented hardships. And what we have here is a letter from 1991 to the prior owner confirming that economic hardship is the criteria for consideration for demolition of the structure. So, with that said, and our legal arguments to the side for a minute, let's look specifically at what the criteria is within your code. As set forth in Section 171-10, the only available criteria is whether demolition would be compatible with the surrounding properties. Now, I want to highlight for a moment the word "shall," which means mandatory. So, that's the only mandatory criteria that's before you today. The second part of the criteria, and we underline where applicable because that's what starts with the second part, it refers to the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. Now, we maintain that standards for rehabilitation do not apply for a COA for demolition, and I think on its face it's clear because this is not an application for rehabilitation. As a result, those standards could not be relied upon as a basis for a denial of the COA. Now, the final portion refers to other guidelines adopted by the commission, and no additional guidelines have been adopted. So, as precedent, we look to the only COA that this city has ever approved for demolition of a historic structure, and that's the pergola. You may be familiar with it. It existed on a separate budding parcel that was owned by the applicant. In 2007, the pergola was damaged during a hurricane, I believe it was Wilma, and like 334 Atlantic, it was deemed structurally unsound and uninsurable. So, the owner applied for demolition. Now, if you look to the resolution back in 2007, when the demolition was approved, the only criteria that was applied was compatibility, not the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. So, we maintain that this is a precedent that the city should and needs to follow. So, next, applying the criteria specifically to 334 Atlantic, we are providing a map that is based on the available public records, and all the properties in the median areas, if you're looking, are constructed after 1950 and of reinforced concrete block masonry. None of the surrounding properties are historic or built in the 1930s. Half were built after 2000, and only two were built prior to Hurricane Andrew. And if you're familiar with building codes, the building codes became much more stringent after Hurricane Andrew. Now, as you can see from the slide, the majority of the houses are also set much further back than the subject property, and they're not on the water's edge, and they appear to also have significantly more elevation at their first floor. We maintain that allowing demolition and construction of a new structure and a more flood-resilient method would make this property more like the properties around it. The staff consultant report notes that a vacant lot would not be compatible. However, the owner has no intention of demolishing and leaving a vacant lot. That's not the highest and best use of the property. If this goes forward, you'll hear more from Mr. Shoal, it would be demolished at some point in the future, and a new structure that's more flood-resilient built in its place. Finally, the staff report also has claims that the new construction could potentially non-compatible if there's new construction, and this is speculative and not accurate, and as we'll demonstrate in a few more slides, that there's a number of new construction homes going on in the immediate area. So, for convenience here, I'll go through these rather quickly. I'm sure some of you have been down the street before and are familiar with the neighborhood. This is 333 Atlantic and 329. We have 325 Atlantic and 323 Atlantic of varying architectural styles and elevations. Here we have 319 and 318, 320 Atlantic and 326 Atlantic, and finally, we have 330 Atlantic built in 1991. In addition, as I mentioned, there's a number of newly constructed homes. I believe some are still going under construction on the street. It has been a few months since I've driven down it, since we had our last hearings. But here's an example of some of the new construction of various more modern architectural types. All appear to be at higher elevations and built in a more flood-resilient method than 334 Atlantic. So, at this point, we maintain that the criteria for demolition was met before the HPP and that the evidence presented is enough to reverse the HPP's decision because, again, we're looking at compatibility with the surrounding properties. But in addition, to determine the structure's condition and to provide additional support and evidence here, the owner did hire a structural engineer to determine the structure's condition and to determine if demolition was the only economic option. And that professional structural engineer was a YHCE, and he was hired to assess the structure of the building. Unfortunately, our consultant was not able to be here tonight. But we do have the report, and we did reintroduce it into the record, the signed and sealed version, and we have copies in case it's not already in the record, although it was submitted during the HPP hearing. In their professional opinion, the engineers determined first that the structure does not comply with current building codes. The structure is made of unreinforced clay masonry, so essentially, and we'll have a slide later that'll show you, it's just kind of terracotta building blocks, and that the grade beams contain critical damage that might compromise the integrity of the structure. As a result of that, the engineer concluded that the current structure has the potential risk of failure in case of a hurricane or a heavy storm scenario. To remedy that condition, the building needs to undergo extensive rehabilitation, including augmenting the foundations, which was compromising the total stability and integrity of the house. The extensive renovations that would be needed would also trigger what is known as the 50% rule. If you're not familiar with that, if you reach a certain threshold of value of the existing structure, you have to bring the entire structure up to code. And that means that the structure would also have to be raised, it would have to be elevated in order to meet the current state standards. Now, in order to raise the structure, the scaffolding would need to be installed, and the engineer concluded that the foundation is weak enough to crumble under the loads during the jacking process. So, elevating the structure is not an option. Finally, the professional opinion is that the structure would not survive an attempt to raise the house due to the fragile walls and lack of structural framing. And here's an example of the unenforced clay masonry walls, and Mr. Shoal can speak more to that as he's lived in the house over the last 30 years or more. So, this one, I will pass it over to Mr. Shoal to speak to some of the particulars of the structure.
Thank you.
Okay. Why how the tables turn, huh? I feel like it's back-to-school night. Okay, well, thanks for having me. It's good to see everyone. First time I'm in the commission chambers since the last time I sat in that chair, so how's that, you know? So, let me try to just put it all, and I'm going to just try to synthesize this into why I'm here and kind of in plain English, which, as y'all know, is probably my preferable way of speaking. So, we're not anti-historic. We've cared for that house for the last 30 years. My wife was on the historic board and voted for the designation of the house. So, we've always been a big fan of the house and been a fan of the historic process, and we painfully maintained the house. My 29-year-old son sleeps in the room that he was born in inside the house. My granddaughter was born in the house three and a half years ago, and one week ago, my second granddaughter was born in the house. So, my point is, we don't take this lightly, okay? And y'all know, everybody knows me well, that house is near and dear to my heart. But through no fault of anyone, a bunch of circumstances kind of congealed over the years that led us to make this request, okay? And I'm going to break it down a little bit in probably more plain English. You know, when we bought the house, I didn't realize it was structurally deficient when I bought it, okay? But as we started to work on it over the years, we realized, okay, wow, there's no columns. So, in other words, most houses have a roof that's tied into a tie beam that's got steel in it, that's tied into a column that goes down to the foundation, that's tied into the ground. This house basically has a foundation, and then it has these terracotta blocks that are built on the foundation, and it's built up from there. So, there's no reinforcement around the windows or doors or for the house. So, you know, Ian spoke to the fact that even if we raised the house, we'd still have to gut the entire house to try to put columns in and reinforcement to make the house structurally sound to meet the South Florida building code today. You say, oh, well, it's been up 90 years. How come it's still standing? And the truth is, I did the research. This area's never been hit by a major hurricane directly. So, I used to say to my wife, the stucco's holding the house together, you know, ironically. But, you know, that's here and there. Why didn't it bother me? Because I had insurance, honestly. Over the years, I realized we had this. I had insurance. I had windstorm. I figured, okay, the house gets clocked, insurance pays, you know, and then we rebuild as needed. But now the house is uninsurable. You know, the last quote I got was $129,000, and then, as Ian pointed out, you know, they went to 11 different markets, and now the house is uninsurable largely because of the construction of the house. Now, they inspect the houses. You know, years ago, they didn't really go in. Now, they go in the attic, they look for the strapping, they know it doesn't have columns, you know, so now the house is uninsurable. And I can't even change the windows and doors because there's no concrete around the windows and doors. They're just kind of like set in the, you know, in the block. And so, basically, you know, what's happened now is because the sea level rise, the water comes up and goes down. So, the house has flooded twice in the last seven years. But more importantly, the water goes up under the foundation and has infiltrated the foundation and made the foundation more brittle. So, when we realize this, you know, that creates less structural integrity for the house. Doesn't mean the house is going to fall down tomorrow, but it basically means that the house can't be lifted, and because of the low-lying nature of the first floor, there's about a five-foot difference now between where you're required to build. I watched you grant my neighbor his variance the other day. There's about a five-foot difference between where he's required to build and where my first-floor elevation sits now, okay? So, when we get a bad storm and we get a, you know, basically the water comes up. So, we went out and hired a structural engineer to try to figure this out because I'm thinking, okay, there's got to be a solution. And frankly, we got a good structural engineer. He's the structural engineer that worked on the Brunetti property, on Plaza del Mar. So, he was a structural engineer that was well-known to the city. He engineered those two new towers, you know, the two new apartment buildings in the south end of the city, and he did a good job. He was very thorough, you know, staff naturally defending their position, tried to beat up on him a little bit. But the fact is, no one's really argued with the outcome of his analysis. He took core samples out of the concrete and went to a national testing lab and said, okay. And the fact is, that's where he made the determination about the concrete being brittle because evidently the water going up and down takes the calcium out of the concrete and creates problems with, you know, with the concrete. So, Ian talked about the 50% threshold. So, how did I get here? So, about three years ago, at the height of the market, y'all saw a lot of the articles, you know, the real estate brokers knocked on my door and said, you know, we can get you a big number for your house. I said, if you can get that number, sell it, okay? I never really believed they could get that number. Ironically, we got offers. But, you know, I only let the house be listed for about six months. months. We got offers, but everybody came back with the same issue. Oh, the house is really interesting, but with sea level rise, eventually we got to be able to tear it down. And so, and that was before they even did any inspections. So, you know, I never got to the point where I had a contract and somebody came and inspected the house and they would have realized that, you know, the lack of structural integrity. So that's when it kind of dawned on me that was, okay, you know, the property really isn't marketable based on the way it is. So what we did was, I first approached the city, I think I talked, I think, yeah, I think I chatted with him. I first approached the city and said, okay, look, you know, we love the house, we'll try to live in it for as long as we can. And by the way, I had insurance then, okay, just to be clear. Why don't we try to lift the historic designation? Because that way, eventually, when somebody needs to tear it down, they'll be able to tear it down, including me or somebody else, you know, if we decide to sell it. Went through a couple of rounds with the city and the city said, well, you know, no criteria, this and that, you're probably better off going for a demo permit. That's how we ended up with the demo permit, okay? Now, you know, I think the H P B, the Historic Preservation Board, you know, they tried, but they had no criteria. And the city attorney did a pretty good job. He kept them on a pretty short leash and said, you know, you really need to focus on this because the fact is, they were attempting to keep it within the context of the H P B. You know, there was a lot of different comments at the H P B and the vote was split. But the fact is, is that there's no, as Ian pointed out, there's really no criteria, you know, for what we're asking for. There's clearly an economic hardship because basically now, I can't do anything with the house, okay? I'm fortunate to own it free and clear. I worked for 30 years, I paid it off, okay? If I had a bank loan, I'm in big trouble because I can't insure the house. So that means even if I wanted to sell the house or get a bank loan, I can't get a bank loan because the house is not insurable anymore. You know, obviously, the house is at risk of flooding. The house is at risk of hurricane damage. My worst nightmare is going to be, if the house only gets 25% damaged by a hurricane, I have to fix it. I have to fix it and it's uninsurable, okay? So it's basically a conundrum, you know? I like to call it a distasteful mess, okay? Unfortunately, you know, after sitting up there for many years, sometimes we get handed distasteful messes as commissioners and public officials. I wish I didn't have to have the item before you, but unfortunately, you know, the city's consultants said no. The H P B said no, but nobody gave me an alternative. Nobody said, hey, you know, we're saying no, but if you do this, you know, there's a pathway to where you need to be. My old friend and neighbor Norman is going to say, well, you should have went to the, you should have went the unsafe structure route, okay? You should have went to the building official and had the house declared unsafe. He wouldn't let me do it, okay? I went to, I said to Alan, let me go talk to the building official. He said, no, this is not within the purview of the building official. We're keeping this within the H P B. You can't go talk to the building official. I said, okay. So we didn't go talk to the, you know, we didn't go talk to Clay. So basically, it's a conundrum, you know? And I'm not, you know, I'm kind of at my wits' end at this point. Obviously, you know, it goes without saying and I'm not being, I'm not being argumentative, but if I get turned down here, I'm going to have to sue the city. Because, and that's what happened last time, by the way. You know, Norman and I had a legendary fight about the church. He's laughing, you know? So the church next door was, 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 there was a rabbi that was controlling the church that wanted to sell the property. It was a kind of a, you know, no one liked that particular rabbi. So it came before, so basically, it was deemed that we're going to, you know, declare the house, declare the church historic, okay? I kind of knew that the church shouldn't be declared historic. Norman disagreed with me, you know, Norman had the votes on that one. They sued. They want a multimillion, million-dollar judgment against the city. I mean, you know, this is about, I don't know, 10 years ago, whatever, but Norman and I had a legendary battle over that one. So, you know, in closing, we know each other for many years. I wouldn't be standing here if I didn't think that I have a meritorious request. Whether it benefits me personally or not, I think y'all know me well enough that I wouldn't be asking for something like this. It's very frustrating for me to be in this position, but I don't know what else to do, quite frankly, you know? And, you know, even if we could raise the house, I don't know that I could bear the expense of doing it all because, you know, it would be ridiculously expensive. Plus, it wouldn't be, I was trying to fathom it. I mean, if we could do it, we would have to raise the house and then move it to the middle of the lot because you've got to then comply with all the setbacks and everything else in the new building code, you know? Besides gutting the inside of the house to then put all the columns in to try to repair it. So, you know, basically, unfortunately, you know, at this point, the house doesn't have a lot of value anymore for that reason, you know? And so that's why we're here. That's what we're before you. I appreciate the time and I appreciate everybody listening. And with that, I'm going to let staff beat up on me now. So, okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, no, just before we conclude and pass it on, we'll just reserve a little time if we need it for rebuttal. Thank you.
Please. Amy.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Amy Canal is Planning and Zoning Director for the city. Tonight's appeal is to consider the application for a special certificate of appropriateness for the demolition of the historic structure located at 334 Atlantic Avenue, also known as the Water Court Villa. Just to reiterate a little bit of the history, the house was constructed in 1927 and it was designated as a historic landmark by Miami-Dade County in 1984. The City of Sunny Isles Beach established its own historic preservation program in 2005 and at that time passed an ordinance to redesignate the four historic landmarks that were in the city's program at that time. That included this home that is under discussion tonight, along with its pergola, the fishing pier, and the two Atlantic Isles bridges. Upon submittal of the application to demolish the structure, the city hired a historic preservation consultant to complete the review of the application. Adrian Burke, the city's consultant, is present with us tonight and provided her expertise for the review of the application and prepared the city's recommendation report that is before you in the record. The city's review is bound to the Historic Landmark City Code of Chapter 171, which states that certificates of appropriateness must be evaluated based on compatibility with surrounding properties and compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards if applicable. Based on these standards in the code, the city and its consultant recommended denial of the application. Specifically, the city's consultant opines that the demolition would not be compatible with surrounding properties and that the applicant did not adequately address how the structure could be mitigated or adapted to meet the Secretary of Interior Standards. The city's recommendation and the materials and evidence in the record before you were presented to the Historic Preservation Board, which, after two separate hearings, voted to deny the application on September 11th. In this appeal, the applicant and staff are presenting the same facts of the case that were presented to the board and therefore, the staff's recommendation remains to deny the application since the requested demolition would not be compatible with surrounding properties and the applicant has not adequately addressed how the structure could be mitigated. Now, should the city commission find competent substantial evidence to support the applicant's request and thereby reverse the board's denial, staff is recommending two conditions be included as part of any approval. The first is to complete full exterior architectural and photo documentation of the structure to include 3D laser scanning. And the second is to place a one-time, one-year time limit on the approval and to complete the demolition within, with a potential for a one-year extension. That concludes my presentation. Myself and Adrian Burke are here if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Hi, Amy. Could you repeat the end, the last two sentences, please?
The two conditions?
Yeah.
So the first is to complete full exterior architectural and photo documentation of the structure to include 3D laser scanning. Information would be provided to the Florida Division of Historical Resources as part of an updated Florida Master Site File Form and to the City of Sunny Isles Beach. This is also included in the consultant's recommendation report. And the second condition is to place a one-year time limit on the approval and to complete the demolition with a potential for a one-year extension for a total of two years.
Okay. Mauricio, procedurally, are we letting public speakers?
Procedurally, since this is a quasi-judicial in a sense, we typically allow public comment for zoning applications which are similar. So if it's your decision to allow the public comment, then we can certainly allow the public comments.
But that would be before we would have questions?
Before, yes.
All right.
So before the commission speaks and basically.
The speakers would be speaking as just the residents with a three-minute time limit?
Three-minute rule.
Correct.
Mayor, just for the record, I would advise though that I do see a couple of members of the board. It would be very irregular to have a board member as a decision-maker speak to the appellate body on this issue. I don't know if counsel for the applicant has any objection to that, but it would be irregular and I would recommend against it.
Mayor, I would concur with what the city attorney is advising.
Okay. Do we have a public speaker signed up?
Yes, we do.
And are they members of the?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so are there objections? It's up to you, but will you go to the microphone so we could have it on the record?
I'm sorry, but could you go to?
I mean, I know what Norman's arguing. Norman and I spoke about this. I guess, Warren, did you also sign up? I mean, you did? Okay. I mean, Ian, it's up to you.
We agree it is irregular and legally we do object and also note that we did adopt and incorporate the entire H P B record into the record of this hearing. So to the extent that they're going to repeat any of the comments, their comments that were made during the H P B hearing that would already be part of this record.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers?
Not for this item, no.
All right. Well, based on that, I want to take the recommendation of the city attorney and city manager unless I have strong objection from the commission.
I appeal the recommendation. I want to allow them to speak.
You?
I appeal, yes, I want them to speak.
Okay. Anyone else feel strongly that they want them to speak?
I would like them to speak as well.
Would the attorney qualify as part of the member of the H P B? I know that Norman cannot speak, but.
No, they would both, they would both be allowed. They would both be allowed to speak.
Oh, they're both, yeah, yeah. Warren's them is part of it, right? Yeah.
And again, the reasoning for it is just, whatever decision you make tonight, I'm trying to protect it and protect the record. And since counsel still has his objection standing, it's an argument that he can raise on appeal. So I'm just trying to prevent that. I don't want to give him more to argue. So again, it's very irregular to have the decision-maker come before an appellate board to speak. It's just highly irregular and it's potentially due process issue.
That's my concern as well. But I want to get consensus or at least the majority of the commission to give their opinion. Vice Mayor, what do you want to say?
Well, before we go there, I mean, I had some questions regarding this, so.
Wait, 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 we're not getting to that. We need, procedurally, it's either we're letting public comment or we're not. So based on the recommendation from the attorney and the fact that this potentially is an issue.
But this is not about public comment. This is about public comment from particular people.
Right, right, right. That's what I'm saying.
So there is no one else to speak?
Wait, 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 wait. We're talking about just them? With the attorney? Commissioner Viscara?
Same.
Same?
I defer to the attorney.
Okay, so based on that, we're not going to let you speak. Do we have any other speakers signed up?
There's no other speaker for this item, ma'am.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. We're not, no, I'm sorry, you can't. I understand, but no, you can't.
We resign the court while we start court because apparently it'll honor our.
Okay. No, 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 sir, please.
Just know that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, please. We want to keep decorum. Thank you. Amy, can you please come up for questions? And the consultant as well, probably, because you said. All right, Vice Mayor, you had a question, I think?
Yeah, so just to get some clarity, right? I see that, my first question, I see that the historic designation is the Water Court Villa and the pergola. And my final question would be, is the entire house designated historic or is it just parts of the house?
The entire house is designated historic.
Okay. Because I was looking at some of the resolutions and the designations and it's specific to, it says Water Court Villa and pergola of the house. So I just wanted to get, so the entire house is?
Yeah, the house is referred to as the Water Court Villa. It's the entire structure.
Oh, okay, okay.
And then the pergola, like counsel stated, is on a separate parcel, so that was designated separately.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any other question?
I have a question.
Vice Mayor, you're done for now? Please, Commissioner Viscara.
Amy, I believe this is also for you. So in terms of the conditions, because somewhere in the report, it says that it's not necessarily the applicant's intention to demolish, but if we go with the conditions, then he has to demolish within days? Is that, that's, I'm understanding that right?
Okay. So when I first approached the city, I said, can we lift the designation so eventually it could be demolished? But I wasn't looking to demolish it right away. I still had insurance, let's be clear, okay? So it wasn't, it wasn't, I didn't feel, I didn't feel the anxiety of not having insurance. Now we don't have insurance, so quite frankly, I don't have any issue with the conditions. And I want to, and I want to, and I want to do the laser treatment and basically the preservation of the, of the, you know, they'll do an architectural analysis of the house and laser analysis and so, you know, so we'll have a record. I mean, I want to do that anyway, so that's not an issue. But I think, I think to the, to Amy's point, you know, a year with a year extension's fine. I mean, but, you know, I'd rather not have to do that, but I don't mind doing it because frankly, without insurance now, I'm very concerned. Once we have the demolition, if we have the demolition approved and a hurricane comes and takes half the house out, okay, we knock the rest of it down and we're done. But I can't do that now. You know, if the hurricane didn't damage more than 50% of the house, I have to rebuild the house. So that's part of the conundrum, you know, that's going on. But we agree to the conditions. That's the bottom line.
Is that the only question? Okay.
Okay. I have questions. I have some questions for you, bud. So.
Commissioner Joseph, could you, Commissioner, could you pull?
Okay. So what is it that you have on the first floor? The floor? What is, what is the, what is the compile?
Living room, dining room, kitchen.
No, no, what is the, what is the material?
Wood flooring.
Wood flooring?
Yeah.
Okay.
The first claim was we had to take up the wood floor in the kitchen and redo the entire floor.
Okay. So the wood is currently in good condition?
Well, it was just redone actually from the last flood, from the last time it flooded.
When was that?
I want to say two years ago, two and a half years ago, yeah.
And when actually did you have, the last time you had insurance was when?
Was two years ago, yeah.
Two years ago.
In 20, the last cycle, it was actually, yeah. I'm sorry, it was three, yeah, yeah, it was two years ago. Yeah, it was two years ago, the last time I had insurance.
So you did have insurance or not in 2022?
2022, I had insurance, yeah.
You did?
Yeah, I had, I'm sorry, let me be clear. So my insurance went to 60,000. I paid it, okay? Two years ago, it went to 129,000.
Right.
I didn't pay it.
So two years ago?
Yeah, two years ago, I did not have, two years ago, I didn't pay it. And then, so the flood might have been three years ago, but I had an insurance claim for the flood, I remember that. And then this past year, it wasn't insurable.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
So for three years, counting this year, you haven't had insurance?
Actually, two years, I'm sorry, yeah, it's two years, because it was, it was the year I didn't, the, the, the year I turned down the hundred and twenty-nine thousand in this past year. So it's been for, it's been two years I haven't had insurance.
Okay, so two hun- so two hundred and fifty-eight thousand you've saved.
Well, a hundred and, well, I mean, yeah, if, if I paid the hundred and twenty-nine thousand, you could argue I'm self-insuring, yeah.
Right.
But it was an eight hundred thousand dollar deductible.
No, I understand.
So, so let me be clear, so it really was an insurance in my opinion, I really felt like the last credible insurance I got was when I paid the sixty thousand. When it went to a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, it was um, they, it was an eight hundred thousand dollar deductible. So frankly, I didn't really feel it was insurance, I felt like it was, they were almost pacifying me because I'd been with that agent for twenty-five years, it was, you know, it, it was Marsh McClellan.
Okay, so what is the uh material on the walls now? Is it drywall or is it plaster?
Yeah, well, the in- the interior walls, there's um, well, the exterior stucco, obviously, right? The interior walls, there's like a, there's like ferring, there's like stripping and then there's drywall, yeah, it's drywall.
Drywall or plaster?
It's drywall, it's drywall, yeah.
Okay, and is the drywall, is it um? Is it powdery in any places or is it in good shape?
Well, I mean, it's been where, where we've had flooding, it's been replaced, you cut it at about four feet, you take it out, you put the fans in and then you replace it and then you patch it, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, but, so that happened three years ago.
Yeah, it was about three years ago, yeah, actually, the first, that, that's the second time, the, the, the other time was about, I think about seven years ago.
Right, okay, but the uh, so the drywall on the interior currently, it's painted?
Yeah, it's painted, sometimes, but there's, you know, you know, there's wood, there's wood, um, there's.
So there's wood.
There's nice finishes, yeah, there's, that, one, like, I think in the living room, it's like.
Baseboard, so you have baseboard molding?
But also there's like, there's wood build out along some of the walls, there's, there's wooden build out, yeah.
So if there had been any. Moisture, you would absolutely see it on the wood?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you know, we took the drywall out and dried it all out, yeah, obviously, yeah.
You know, finished corners and all.
Yeah, sure.
If there's any moisture at all, you would see a separation and.
Yeah, yeah, if we, you know, you know, when it flooded, that's what happens, yeah.
So do you see any of that?
Yeah, well, not now, it hadn't, it hadn't flooded lately, yeah.
So there's no moisture coming into the house from below. Current that you can see?
I mean, that, you know, not that I can see, um, yeah, yeah.
Right, yeah, so you don't have any water infiltration, moisture, moisture infiltration.
I mean, I mean, you know, the house is damp by, because it's right on the water, so it's damp by nature, but we, but, 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 but we, you know, I've got pretty honking air conditioning that. That takes a lot of the moisture out of it, yeah.
Right, but there's a water barrier probably below the uh.
There actually isn't, no.
That was put down.
No, yeah, yeah, there's no moisture barrier, like, under the house.
No, but when you had the wood flooring replaced, they would have put a, a moisture barrier.
Um, I guess, you know, they put, they put plywood down on the concrete floor and then they put the, then they put the wood on the plywood, that's how they did it.
So any, any, professional installer knows to put a water barrier.
So I'm assuming they did, frankly, yeah, yeah, I wasn't here when they did it, so I, I, I didn't see them do it, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming they did it, yeah.
Right, so you have nicely finished uh moldings on the, on the baseboard.
Sure.
That look professionally done.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that would lead me to believe that currently you have no. Moisture infiltration from the floor at this point.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you'd have separation.
Yeah, 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 well, I mean, I mean, I mean, the tide's not coming up of, you know, when we have a problem, it comes up, but, but the tide does come up under the house. It gets close, but it, but it, but it covers the gray beams and the, you know, under the house, you know, just to be clear.
Like it always did.
Yeah, 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 it's been flooding, it's been flooding, I mean, it, it didn't used to do it years ago, but now it does it, yeah.
Okay, but still, there's no infiltration, otherwise you would see it immediately.
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
Does that answer your question? Okay, good, thanks.
Any other questions? No? Commissioner Stivison, do you have questions? Okay. Anyone else? All right, then I'll take a motion.
The motion can.
Right, would, would the motion be, just we need to clarify what that is as well as, well, first, what the motion would be?
Well, what's on the agenda is, is based on.
You either can affirm, modify or reverse the HBV's decision to deny the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay, so then I'll take a motion to either affirm, deny.
Can we, I'm sorry, I just, I just need to walk through what each of those things means.
So affirm would mean that you agree with the HBV and you deny the certificate of appropriateness. Modify.
Which means they can't, they would have to lift the house, move the house, all that stuff, okay, that's one.
There's really no way to modify, although there are conditions, but there, there's really no way to modify it, uh, it's a, it's a yes or no type situation.
Conditions were the modification.
That would be if you, no, the modification, you can't modify denial.
Got it, okay.
You can't be a little pregnant, so you, you either affirm the denial. Modification's not really in play or you, um, I'm sorry, you affirm, modify or you reverse, and the reverse would be that. They could go forward with a certificate of appropriateness for demolition. And then at that point, we need clarification as to whether it includes the conditions or not.
Okay.
Is that clear, I'm sorry if.
Does everyone understand?
Okay, so then what is the motion?
So the motion would be, we, anyone here can make a motion to either affirm. Or didn't, say, reverse.
Reverse.
Affirm or to reverse.
Right, because modify is not enough.
Right, so reverse would be to allow what they are requesting and affirm is to. Um, remain with what the committee.
And is it, is it reverse? And then reverse with conditions or just?
Well, that would be up to whoever makes the motion, but if you, if you agree that it's appropriate for the house to be demolished. Then it would be a reversal, and then if you want to apply the conditions, the motion would be to reverse the HBV's decision. With the conditions that are recommended by the staff.
Well, I'll make a motion to reverse with the conditions.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Marisha.
I'll take a roll call for this one, Mayor. Okay. Commissioner Joseph.
So what you're making the reversal.
Commissioner, could you turn on your microphone, please?
So you're recommending, you're voting to demolish the house.
That is not my desired outcome, I wish it, we could just leave it open, but that's not on the menu, so.
We, we have, I know, but there's a vote on the table, so let's get the clarification from the attorney.
The people that are voting to say that they're clear on what they're voting on.
Yes, the attorney, the attorney has, has made that clarification, so what is your vote?
I vote to uphold the findings of. Of the board.
Okay, so you're a no. Commissioner Stivison?
Please, Commissioner Stivison? Yes, it's a roll call, yeah, Commissioner Stivison, your vote.
I, I vote with the reverse.
With conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
Same, you didn't take mine.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
The motion is approved four to one.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you. All right, next item, please.
Okay, next, next item is. Eight A. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter two sixty-five, article two, section two sixty-five dash five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach. Title definitions, to revise the definition of the term height. And incorporating terms consistent with the Federal Emergency Management Agency's National.
Let me stop for a moment, I am so sorry, I said I would give you a few minutes to, to get your stuff. I, I apologize. It's the court reporter.
Okay, so eight A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending chapter two sixty-five, article two. Section two sixty-five dash five of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach. Title definitions, to revise the definition of the term height and incorporating terms consistent with the Federal Emergency Management Agency's National Flood Insurance Program. And the Florida Building Code to amend the basis for building height measurement. Providing for repealer, providing for survivability, codification and providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Go ahead, Amy.
Okay, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Commissioners, this is second reading of the ordinance to change the method for measuring building height. Acting as the land planning agency that um. This item was just discussed, so I'm not going to reiterate, reiterate the purpose of this ordinance. Uh, however, for the record, I do need to note the additions that were made to the ordinance um since first reading. This includes a diagram that was added that depicts how to measure building height. And additional definitions for terms to support and clarify the measurement. These definitions are for the terms low slope roof and for the term mean roof height, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you, do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Are there questions from the commission? I'll take a motion then.
So moved.
Second. Marisha, you got that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
No, roll call.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah, this ordinance, sorry.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stivison? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
The ordinance is, the ordinance passes four to zero, I mean, five to zero, excuse me.
Thank you, okay, eight B?
Eight B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash C so six, approving budget amendment number BA twenty-three twenty-four dash O four. To the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of our ordinance, it's year-end cleanup for our fiscal twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget.
Thank you, do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
There are questions from the commission? Take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second, Marisha?
Commissioner Stivison? Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
The ordinance passes five to zero.
Okay, eight C, please.
Eight C is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash six eighteen, approving budget amendment number BA twenty-four twenty-five dash O one. To the city's operating and capital improvement budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date, and second and final reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the second reading of our first budget amendment and includes some capital improvement budget adjustments.
Thank you, do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the commission? I'll take a motion, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stivison? Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
The ordinance passes five to zero.
Okay, now we're to resolutions.
Nine A is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Douglas Robertson to provide law enforcement accreditation consulting services.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, as you know, we have recently become an accredited police department. And this is an ongoing agreement with Doug Robertson, it's not additional monies, it's just an extension of time.
Great. Marisha, do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Are there questions from the commission? I'll take a motion, please.
I have, I have a question.
Please go ahead.
So this um consultant, how long is, how long is it um? Might it go on for, actually?
Our acc- our accreditation runs in three-year cycles, our next accreditation comes up in twenty twenty-six. So we're in the process of training some staff in addition with the consultant to help.
I see, so as we take on new officers, the consultant comes in to assist in their training?
It's a matter of consistently reviewing and updating our standard operating procedures with the latest. Uh, police, best policing practices.
Yes, so at some point, do we have someone on our, in our police department itself that takes over that role or no?
We're work, we're looking at that towards the future, but currently, one of our staff is training with the consultant in consideration of the future.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay. Take a motion?
So moved.
Second, Marisha, you got?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next item, please.
Nine B is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a Matvac LR fifty mini sweeper from Environmental Product Group.
Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is to purchase a mini sweeper to be used throughout the city in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Marisha, any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the commission?
No.
Take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nine C is withdrawn, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So we're going to nine D?
Nine D is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a Ford F two fifty super crew pickup truck from Allen J Fleet Sales.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is the purchase of a super crew pickup truck for our facilities department.
Great, any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any questions from the commission?
I do, actually, I mean, we, we withdrew nine C, right, which was a Ford F five fifty for a hundred and eighty-one thousand. And then we're including nine Z.
Twenty twenty-five, the first one was twenty twenty-five, this is twenty twenty-four. The model.
I see, but such, such a difference in, in price?
Yeah, I can clarify, Mayor, okay, so we, we withdrew nine C was, if you recall during our discussions, that is for. A super cab that we were going to add a crane attachment.
Mm-hmm.
So that whenever we have, let's say, in the past, we've had some flooding or wind issues. Some of trees come down in the middle of Collins, we'll now have a crane attachment to be able to lift those. So what happened is during our review, we determined that we could get that particular item. For approximately sixty thousand dollars cheaper from another vendor.
Mm-hmm.
So we are withdrawing nine C and we have added an item nine Z.
Yeah.
Nine Z is the crew cab with the crane attachment. Nine D is simply, it's for lack of better terms, a super pickup truck.
No, 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 I understand, but my, my point is that, so with, with, uh, what's the first, Allen J Fleet Sales, right? I know that one is a twenty twenty-five and the other one is a twenty twenty-four and I'm comparing nine C to nine Z, right? And my, the point I'm trying to make is that. I'm a little bit hesitant of Allen J now because I don't know if they're overcharging us and the next item, which is nine D. Is sixty-four thousand, I understand it's just a regular pickup truck. But then my question would be. Are there any do- any other dealerships that could probably give us better pricing? You know, because that, that price, I don't know if Allen J is just.
I can give you a little bit of the history, that I think will help clarify.
That's what kind of jumped out at me.
So, right, and it's a good point, originally, we were trying to purchase the twenty twenty-four vehicle. That is nine Z. However, that item had been sold and prices have gone up since then, so we went to Allen J for item nine C. At the additional sixty thousand dollars. However, we contacted the vendor to find that the original item we wanted to order a year ago. Which would be the twenty twenty-four. Was now available, the deal fell through, so they honored the price from the twenty twenty-four and we were able to get it, even though it's a year older. We felt like saving the cost difference between the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five was appropriate. So we withdrew the one and we're going with the other. But the other prices are based on bids that we've gotten from Allen J, so we feel like they are appropriate.
Is the twenty twenty-four now a used vehicle?
It is not, it's a good question, it has zero miles on it and we confirmed, so we brought that to you to purchase that.
So that, then my next question would be for nine D, that we go to Hawkeye. Who's going to be selling us the twenty twenty-four truck with the crane?
They did not have that available, right, sir.
That's what I'm, yeah, that, that's what I was trying to get at, because, yeah, Allen J, I don't know.
I have one thing to say about the twenty twenty-four, so now it's been sitting on the lot for how long, at, at least a year? Right?
It still would come with a standard warranty with the other vehicles.
You have to now check out the tires. Yes, but you have to now check out the tires because they've been sitting there, probably not spinning, and they could be dried out or whatever.
We will inspect it thoroughly upon delivery to make sure. If it's not according to specs, then we will reject it.
Thank you.
But new tires should be cheaper than sixty thousand dollars, so we'll still be on the, we'll still be on the green.
Well, but to consider, consider the tires now, if it's been sitting.
I think, I think they'll, 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 they'll check them before they pay. I'll take a motion.
Not always.
Bless you.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item?
Nine E is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford Transit T two fifty cargo van from J, from Allen J Fleet Sales.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is to purchase a cargo van for fleet that we're mainly gonna use for storage of tools going from site to site.
Okay. Any speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, any questions? I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, next item, please.
Nine F is a resolution approving a first amendment to the agreement with Johnson Controls to provide preventive maintenance and repair services to the city's HVAC and lighting mechanical and control systems at the government center.
Okay. Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is the company that installed the system and this contract is an amendment to provide maintenance and repair for the HVAC and lighting and mechanical control systems for this building.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions?
No.
I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Need a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine G?
A resolution approving a third amendment to the agreement with Chronos S A A S H R for a time and attendance software.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is timekeeping and attendance software for our staff, and we have also added some additional time clocks, like for example, at the spot.
Great, thank you. Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
No.
I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next item, please.
Nine I is a res, excuse me, ten, nine H is a resolution, rescinding resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six ninety-five, ratifying the purchase of a new twenty-four by thirty-six pre-engineered modular building to be located at one eighty seventy Collins Avenue.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, when we discussed this at our workshop, this was the original contract we had for the modular, which is now in place next door. The company was requesting all of the money upfront, which we rejected and subsequently went with another company where we would guarantee delivery first.
Great, thank you. Do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
No.
Motion, please.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Next item, nine I?
Nine I is a resolution approving a project agreement with Rodriguez Architects to provide additional professional architectural services for a new structure at the property located at Bella Vista Park.
City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is ongoing project at Bella Vista, Bella Vista Park. The state of Florida is requiring some additional work for us and regarding the land lease and some of the submerged properties and seawall.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Now, what is the structure, if I can ask?
The structure is going to be the Marine Patrol Office.
Okay.
Yes.
Because previously, weren't we told that there couldn't be a structure at all on that property?
I'm not aware of that.
No?
No, we, we voted for the office.
Oh, but, so maybe we were talking about a small restaurant or something and they said that it couldn't be? I remember it was quite some time ago. No, no one else has that recall?
No.
Okay.
All right, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Nine J?
Nine J is a resolution approving a project agreement with Keith and Associates for civil engineering and landscape architectural services for Bella Vista Park.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is same project for civil engineering and landscaping for Bella Vista.
Do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nine K?
A resolution approving a project agreement with Rodriguez Architects to provide construction administration services and special structural inspection services for a new structure to be located at the Intercoastal Sports Park.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is an agreement with Rodriguez Architects and they will provide construction administration and special inspection services for our new work at Intercoastal Sports Park.
Great. Any public speakers, Mauricio?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
No.
I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nine L?
A resolution approving a letter agreement with Keith and Associates to provide construction administration services for the construction of the Intercoastal Sports Park.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is an agreement with Keith and Associates and they're gonna provide construction administration and oversight for the construction of the park, Intercoastal.
Thank you. Do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Questions from the Commission? I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Second? I need a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine M?
A resolution approving a first amendment to the project agreement with BEA Architects to provide professional architectural design services for the renovation of the property located at one eighty fifty Collins Avenue, formerly known as Tony Roma's, extending the agreement for an additional twelve months.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is approving our first amendment with BEA Architects for the design of our project next door at the governmental center annex. It's, the agreement is set to expire in January. There's no monitor extension, it's just an extension of the agreement.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any questions from the Commission?
No.
I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I get a second?
No.
There was no second, I need a second.
Okay, thank you. Guys are talking too fast. Next item, please.
Nine N is a resolution approving a letter agreement with Perkins and Will to provide architectural and engineering design permitting and construction services for emergency generator installation at Gateway Park.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is an agreement with Perkins and Will for permitting and construction for emergency generator install, which we're trying to get done at Gateway.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any comments from the Commission?
No.
Take a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Nine M? Wait, right?
Nine O.
Oh. Oh, sorry, I went backwards, yeah, thank you.
A resolution approving an agreement between the Board of Trustees of the International, excuse me, of the Internal Improvement Trust Fund of the state of Florida and the City of Sunny Hills Beach relating to the sovereignty submerged lands lease for operation of the Newport fishing pier.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is essentially an agreement between us and the state of Florida where we have to provide them a percentage of monies for the pier.
Any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay, any comments from the Commission?
No.
Take a motion, please.
Motion.
I need a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think people are getting a cold on the days. Next item, please.
Nine P is a resolution approving the use and occupancy agreement and the addendum thereto with the Florida Department of Transportation for public parking and other public purposes on parcel six fifty-three, lot three, located underneath the William Lehman Cosway.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, this is our, this is our agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation, FDOT, to allow public parking and other public purs, purposes on lot six five three, which is located under the William Lehman.
Thank you. Do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
Yes, I have a question.
Please go ahead.
So, is this an additional lot that we hadn't used previously?
No, because there was some changes in the way FDOT, um, I guess, puts together their leases, they're requiring us to do a new lease, so this one on six five three and six five four are very similar, but it's not anything additional than what we had before.
Okay, so it's what we, it's areas that we've leased previously?
Yes, and they also receive forty percent of our revenues per contract for both of these lots. That's nine P and nine Q.
All right.
All right. I need a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
So moved, I mean, second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nine Q is a resolution approving an amendment to the use and occupancy agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation for public parking and other public purposes on parcel six fifty-four, located underneath the William Lehman Cosway.
City Manager.
So this is lot six five four and it is, what's happened is FDOT has, it used to be one lease and they've separated into two, but they also, they still have the standard agreement where they get forty percent of our revenues.
Got it. Do we have any public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
Was there, what was the purpose of them splitting the parcels?
I think it's just, um, a matter of efficiency for them or tracking. Instead of having one lump lease, they're now breaking these parcels out into separate leases.
So does that make it more difficult for us if we were to try to use the property under the Lehman?
No, no, it doesn't. It's the same. It's the same lease, it's just essentially they've broken it into two instead of one big one, they've broken it into two separate parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, nine R?
Nine R is a resolution approving an agreement with Crema Downtown Corp. to design, build, operate, and lease restaurant space at the property located at one eighty fifty Collins Avenue.
Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Commission, we spoke extensively about this at our workshop and in individual meetings with you. We feel like this is the best lease of the space, Crema, at eighty-five dollars a square foot. This is a ten-year lease, it's for fourteen hundred and forty square feet of interior space with seventeen hundred square feet of outdoor patio area.
Do we have public speakers?
No, ma'am.
Any questions from the Commission?
Yes, did we ever, sorry, did we ever receive a menu from this restaurant or no?
Yes, we did. I forwarded that to you and the menu is standard and they wanna have some flexibility based on what our customers here would like.
So there is a dinner, um, plans for dinner also or no?
Yes, there is, and it will be open from seven AM to nine PM.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a few comments. Can we, can you please clarify about the broker's fee? The, did we approve to hire a broker to get this, um, this option of this restaurant?
Yes, item nine R, we've clarified and put in the broker's fees of six percent into this agreement.
No, 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 I understand, but, um, did we approve to hire a broker back in the day, like beforehand? And how much are we gonna be paying right now in broker fee?
It was through procurement, it's a professional service that is, is kinda like getting a real estate broker. So it's a professional service that's permitted and exempted under the purchasing code, so the city manager approved it and projected was under, their commission essentially came down, was projected to be under fifty thousand dollars, which it turned out to be, cause it's forty-eight and changed, forty-eight.
It's forty-eight and changed twice.
Right.
So it's almost a hundred thousand dollar.
No, the other, that payment, the other forty-eight thousand dollars is to not our broker, the other broker.
But we're paying.
Which is what you're approving, yes. That's industry standard where you're gonna pay.
That's my point, so in broker's fee, to whoever broker it is, we are paying almost a hundred thousand dollar.
For the two, yes. For our broker, it's three percent, it's forty-eight thousand, that's the only person we're contracted with.
Correct.
The other one, you're appro, you would be approving tonight along with this lease because that's part of the cost of the lease.
My point, correct. In broker's fee, in general, it's almost a hundred thousand dollar.
Right.
Which we never approved that, and, and I've been having issue with this, eh, eh, property for a while, because if you see the space, we're leasing, what, less than a quarter of the space or the whole total space, because we're bringing the building department there, uh, which I believe is a big mistake, it should be a whole restaurant. And my problem, the problem that I have is now with the result, probably Crema is overly qualified, it's gonna be an amazing restaurant, I have no doubt of it, is the process, how we get to there, okay? Because I, I, I'm not gonna speak for anybody else, I was kept in the dark of the whole process until last meeting when it was brought to us. So in the future, I would like to be a little bit more engaged or informed of what is it that is being done, and if we are gonna be paying a hundred thousand dollar for somebody And if we are gonna be paying a hundred thousand dollar for somebody else to come and tell us who we should be giving the contract to, we have an amazing procurement, eh, department. They do an amazing job. So this is a hundred thousand dollar that we should not be paying to anybody. We should have, do a bid and get the opportunity out there for anyone who wanted to participate to do so. And we didn't do that, at least not through our people. So, um, I've been having the same comment from the beginning, so clearly I'm not in favor of this. Nothing to do with Crema. I'm pretty sure they're an amazing company and it's, I hope it's gonna be a very good restaurant. I can't wait to be there. So like I said, I'm not, my issue is not now with the result, it's with the process.
Mr. City Manager, could you please clarify the, the process and, and why it makes sense for us to pay a realtor fee so that, for the record and so we can understand?
I guess essentially it would come down-
Broker fee. Sorry, go ahead.
I guess essentially it would come down to results. So when we first put this out to bid, if you'll recall, I think it was at least a year ago, our original bids that came in, there were two bids and we were looking at, we rejected both of those bids, by the way. And we were looking at around thirty-two dollars a square foot. So then, um, we put it back out to bid and we ended up with Negroni, which was a great choice. And the commission approved it at seventy-five dollars a square foot. But then at that time, Negroni chose an alternate location. We engaged with a consultant who knows the very specific details of commercial leases. And they, through their expertise, were able to bring us, they sent it out to over seventy-five hundred people. We were able to narrow it down through the finance and the procurement team and ended up with Crema at eighty-five dollars a square foot, which is ten dollars more. And something else our broker brought to us was negotiating a fifteen dollar per square foot joint maintenance agreement through the property. So in the end, though, you may be seeing an expense in terms of our broker fees, we're end up, we're going to end up making over a hundred and fifty thousand, if not more, over the life of the lease, depending upon how well the restaurant does. And our projections on the numbers are low based on the averages of Crema performing, but they are-
That's per year, the, the one-fifty's.
Per year.
Per year, not the life of the, per year?
Yes, for clarification, yes. So that's how we ended up where we are.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, but we are not comparing apples to apples because those thirty-two dollars per square foot was for the whole property. And right now we are getting eighty-five dollar for, for a little quarter of the property. So if we had taken the thirty-two by a hundred percent of the square footage of the property, we would be making more money, if it's about the money.
Any other questions?
I just wanna comment on that.
Please, go ahead.
The, the Negroni, and again, was the thirty-two dollars, is that what Negroni was gonna pay?
That was seventy-five.
That was seventy-five, okay. So I was gonna say, because Negroni was also part of the thing. Um, no, I, I think, um, I understand that sometimes decisions need to be made and, and we, and we move, I think Commissioner Stuyvesant would have been appeased if we had been told, hey, guys, there's a shift going on and, and just expect something coming. That said, it's two forty-eight thousand dollar, uh, expenses, yes, they're, they're fees, but it's, they're both under fifty. And he has the authority to make that decision, but it's still coming to us. And we just found a hundred thousand dollars in, in savings, just in this agenda alone. The, the mini sweeper is forty thousand dollars cheaper and the truck is sixty thousand dollars cheaper. So we just paid for that here. In the grand scheme, we're okay. But, you know, an email wouldn't have hurt.
Okay. All right. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
I need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Okay. Mauricio, you got it? Okay. Next item, please.
Nine S is a resolution approving an in-kind donation to the Habad Lubavitch of Sunny Hills Beach for the use of the government center parking garage for a free community event.
City Manager?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is approving an in-kind donation to Habad Lubavitch for the use of the government center parking garage on December twenty-fifth.
Any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Any comments or questions? I'll take a motion, please.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go ahead.
Nineteen is a resolution approving an in-kind donation to the Russian Center of South Florida for the use of Gateway Center and Gateway Park for a free community event.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this is an in-kind donation to the Russian Center of South Florida for the use of Gateway for a free community event to be held on Sunday, December twenty-ninth.
Thank you. Any speakers?
No ma'am.
Any questions?
No.
I'll take a-
I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
I'm in favor of this and I will make a motion after, after my comments, but I wanna know how is this different than the chess tournament when they just request the space to have the tournament? And we tell, and we told them, no. In this case, we, and I'm in favor of this a hundred percent. I know it is said that it's in kind, but we have to pay the personnel, we have to pay the police, there is like a lot of payment that they are gonna be associated to both these in-kind donations. However, when a residence came to request the space to also a five oh one C three, um, they came as, and spoke to everybody, I believe, uh, in request the space, we turned them down. So I don't believe we have a criteria and we, if we have it, we're clearly not following it. And I'm in favor of this.
Okay.
And I'd just like to go on the record agreeing with, uh, Fabiola.
Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant, did you wanna make the motion?
The motion.
Okay, I need a second?
I'd like to comment something. So, so yeah, I think we need to urgently come up with a donations criteria so we could, um, you know, tackle these issues, uh, the right way.
And treat everyone more fairly.
Yeah.
Mayor, we are in the final draft of bringing to you a donation process. We're doing our final review with legal and we will have it to you for our next meeting. Um, that includes all of the things that you've been asking us for and you each have been assigned monies in the budget. And provided they meet the criteria, if you would like to bring any of those future donations forward, it will be up to you all as the commission to vote and direct us.
All right, but since it's not on the agenda, I just, I don't wanna get into discussion about it, it's not on the, the agenda. But we have a motion, let's just-
Can I ask a question tonight?
Yes, absolutely, but let's vote on this.
Okay.
So that, did I get-
No, 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 but this is part of the conversation because like, eh, Vice Mayor Lama said, um, okay, we need a, eh, a policy, but I believe we actually don't need it. It should be on, on its merits, one by one, like we are doing it right now. Because, you know what, like I said, uh, we are not being fair, we are not treating everybody. And, and then if it's gonna be, everybody's gonna have the money, the money, uh, uh, allocated, then this is gonna go to who? Like a little bit to everybody? That doesn't make any sense.
I think these are two different conversations. The in-kind and the other, it's two different conversations.
This is not in kind when we have to pay the people. We have to pay the police officers, we have to pay the people that is gonna be putting the, the, no, there is money.
Wait, 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 wait. Guys, 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 I, I wanna make sure that, hold on, hold on.
Okay, if I may.
Commissioner Stuyvesant has the floor, please.
Okay.
Please don't interrupt her. Go ahead.
When we are, it has a cost to be there, okay? So even though that if we are not collecting the money, we are not taking it out of our pocket, it has some money associated. So, and when we are paying our personnel, when we're paying our police officer, when we're paying our public workpeople or CCS or whoever we're paying, it's not in kind. There is money going out of, of our bank account. So we can call it in kind and like I said, have a motion on it, but it's just not in kind.
Okay, Commissioner Viskar, and then we do have a motion, so I wanna move forward. Go ahead, Commissioner Viskar.
It's in kind because you're not handing somebody else a check. It doesn't mean that it doesn't have a cost for us. It's just a, a, a definition, it's a technicality issue, but yes, it is in kind. But, yes, there's also a cost.
Okay. One comment and then let's vote.
Yes, correct. Okay, so basically going on this un, in-kind, uh, donation, we basically at this point have to say, and I, I know someone will agree with me, that, um, the checker chess association was treated unfairly.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you for your, your comment. All right, so, uh, do I have a second? Did you make a second?
I will make a second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next item, please.
Nineteen is a resolution condemning the anti-Semitic attacks on Israeli soccer fans in Amsterdam, Netherlands.
Okay, thank you. This is my item. Um, I, I, I kinda feel a little bit like a broken record. It seems that there's always a reason for me to bring something, uh, like this up, um, as others have on this commission, um, as well in these chambers. Uh, earlier today, we commemorated Kristel Nacht, uh, anniversary from nineteen thirty-eight, um, where there was a program against the Jewish businesses and synagogues and people in, in Germany. Um, and sadly, around that same, um, time, two weeks ago, uh, there was a very similar incident in Amsterdam during a soccer game. Where it was, what was widely considered to be a program, which means that it is a planned, um, and calculated and orchestrated, uh, event where there are persons that are actively going there. Um, with, with weapons for the purpose of, uh, hurting or, or worse, um, Jews. And at this point, it wasn't actually just Jews, it was Israelis, because I believe it was the Israeli team that was playing. So I thought that, first of all, we need to sadly continue to reiterate to our community that they are safe and not just the Jewish community, it's also, uh, persons that are from Israel who are not necessarily, um, Jewish. And for me, it was important to, uh, have your input to see what you think because I think I'd, I'd like to give the city manager the authority to review our safety protocol as it pertains to, eh, events, big events where we have a lot of people. And to make sure that if he believes or he recommends, or the chief recommends rather, that we have additional police presence or if they don't. Um, I wanna make sure that this is something that we don't take for granted because just because it happened in Europe doesn't mean that it can't happen here. Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay. Any comments?
I, I, um, wholeheartedly agree with that statement and I believe that, uh, we can't take, uh, current events lightly and, uh, things can happen here. And we have to, uh, be steadfast in our, uh, protecting our residents.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Stuyvesant?
I would like to add something or modify and make a motion with this modification, so I'm gonna read it. Because if the idea is to reiterate to our community that we are protecting them, so I would like to add, um, condemn all acts of hate in any form, whether they target individuals or communities based on race, religion, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, political affiliation, or any other basis of identity, including two attacks that happened locally recently. Like the attack on August fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, to our teenagers in El Tropico and the attack in October twenty-one, twenty twenty-four to our fellow commissioner Jerry Joseph in Aventura.
October twenty-third.
October twenty-third, sorry, I put twenty-one. October twenty-third, twenty, I'm sorry, third, twenty twenty-four. So, um, if the idea is to condemn hate and to reiterate to our community that we are doing anything and everything for them to feel safe, I believe these two, eh, attacks should be also included.
The, the, um, the spirit of this resolution is very specific to anti-Semitic attacks and recognizing what happened in Amsterdam. So I can appreciate- No, I, one second, please. I can appreciate what you're trying to say and I, obviously, we all have said this many times, that we condemn any kind of hate. But, um, this is very specific to what happened in Amsterdam and anything having to do with large crowds. And it is very specific to persons that are either Jewish or from Israel. So I can appreciate what you're trying to say and, you know, I, I, um, would invite you to put that on the agenda for next month, but that's not what this is for. That's not the purpose of this.
If I may, regardless, I make a motion with the modification.
I'd like to hear from everyone else first, if anyone has any comments.
Okay, so two things. I, I'm, let, let me process what you just said. I, because I do agree with you, we should be also thinking about locally. But in, in terms of the, the, giving the city manager the authority to review safety protocols, et cetera, doesn't he already have that authority? I would, I would hope he's doing that.
No, it, of course, but this is more of rather than, you know, n, not any one of us are, are, um, really by, by charter allowed to give the instruction to any of the staff to, to review anything. So this would be more about, okay, this happened in Amsterdam. We are recognizing that at large events, we don't have a soccer field, but, well, we do have soccer games, actually. But that we recognize that there's a potential and that we would like him to review safety protocols for any event that has a large amount of people attending. But this is specific to, regarding antisemitism and persons from Israel because I'm relating it to what happened in Amsterdam, which was a program. And I understand that they seem related, but this is very specific to this.
Yeah, um, I, okay, I, I just think the city manager already has the authority and I believe that the police department is already doing us, uh, we know, I mean, we just had the explosives dog this afternoon for that reason, right? Like we're being proactive and the Jewish community is one of the reasons that we're addressing that. Um, I, I don't know, I, I, I don't think that part is necessary. Um, but, I could ask my comment.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments? Okay. Um, so, getting confused now. Procedurally, I just wanna make sure you're making a motion with-
The modification, right.
Okay.
I would like to hear it again.
Commissioner, could you? Thank you.
All acts of hate in any form, whether they target individuals or communities based on race, religion, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, political affiliations, or any other basis of identity, including attacks on August fourth, twenty twenty-four in Sunny Hills Beach to our teenagers and October twenty-three, twenty twenty-four to our Jewish commissioner Jerry Joseph.
I'm concerned that we are, um, in any way stating that those are hate crimes or that there was a crime. We, we don't have that authority.
Which attacks are you referring to, to the teenagers? Which ones?
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
The five teenagers that were attacking El Tropico on August fourth.
Yeah, I don't know if that's still part of a criminal process. I don't know that I would be speaking on it officially as a body. I don't know what the criminal disposition is on the case.
Okay.
So I wouldn't specifically make any findings on what may or may not have occurred. I, I don't know enough specifics about it, but we would need to check to see what the criminal status is.
And regarding my attack, I didn't think about it before, but my attack absolutely could have been a hate crime.
Again, I don't have any, enough specifics and we would need to, is that part of a criminal process?
Um, I have to now, uh, look into it in that, in that light.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I mean, I wouldn't recommend commenting officially as a body on anything that's currently pending that hasn't had a disposition.
Okay, thank you. Right, there's a motion on the table.
So, what, my question is how are we tying it into the current language in nine U? Your, your revision.
Yeah, it's, this is about hate. Okay.
I, I know, but we have a resolution.
Okay.
You're amending the resolution.
Correct.
So how is the language being amended?
What I read twice, whereas-
Yes, but where is it tied, where is it tied in? Yeah, but where are you tying it in, in order to make it one flowing resolution?
It is in one of the whereas, condemning blah, 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 everything I put.
Okay. So then the resolution itself would have to be rewritten so that it's a flowing resolution?
No, it's with an amendment, with a modification, yeah.
Right, with a, yeah.
So I make the motion with the modification, yes. If somebody said, oh, we voted, if not-
But you still have to rewrite the resolution?
No, she's just, her motion is adding a whereas with what she read. That's what she's proposing.
Okay, fine. Okay, so we'll do it that way.
Not the sections of it.
Okay, fine.
Is the title changing at all?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Just making sure.
I need a second, then?
I'll second.
Mauricio?
We'll take a roll call for this. Commissioner Joseph?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Stuyvesant?
Yes.
Commissioner Viskar?
I'm gonna be a no because of, of the attorney's comments and I, I will defer to that. But I think it's absolutely appropriate at some point, maybe that point is today, if, you know, if we're voted, but, um, to address the safety at home. We, I, 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 I absolutely support that sentiment, but I will defer to the attorney, uh, and I'm gonna be a no on the amendment.
Mayor Fechen?
And it's, it's definitely a no. It's not part of my resolution and I absolutely defer to the attorney. There is no, there are no decisions on any of those statements. So to vote to, uh, condemn them as hate or as a crime, um, I think puts us in a very precarious, um, position, so I'm definitely a no.
Thank you. Resolution as amended is approved three to two.
Next item?
Are we leaving the, 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 um, so I, so that was the, the amendment. But what about the authority? Are we touching that at all? Or we're leaving that?
Just voted to leave it.
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Nine V is a resolution expressing support for a collaborative initiative requesting that the Miami-Dade Transportation Planning Organization and the Florida Department of Transportation prioritize a study addressing traffic congestion at the intersection of one sixty-third street and Biscayne Boulevard.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission, this item, a similar item was voted upon and approved in North Miami Beach. And they asked us to assist with requesting that Miami-Dade Transportation Planning and FDOT make a priority study of the roadway at one sixty-third street in Biscayne.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
We do. David Virgil?
Good evening. My name is David Virgil. My address is one seven five zero zero North Bay Road, Sunny Hills Beach. I just wanna say I think it's a good idea to support this initiative because of the traffic at one sixty-third street and, and Biscayne Boulevard has been terrible over the past few years, especially with the addition of Bright Line passing through at least twice an hour. It messes up the traffic signals and it causes over fifteen-minute delays just trying to get through the intersection. Um, I'm not sure what can be done because in the future, another train will be added with the metro being extended to Aventura, so I think traffic might get even worse. Uh, maybe a bridge like on Ivesary Road over the train tracks might be a good idea. I know this isn't to give a recommendation, I'm just saying, but, um, yeah, I support, uh, this initiative.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, yeah.
Please, go ahead.
I believe there is a, uh, large construction, uh, development that's planned for that area, is, is there not?
There may need.
There's numerous projects planned along one sixty-third street.
Solid gold is over there. There is, um, high rises that are planned, I believe.
There's projects everywhere there.
Eastern shores, there's a whole bunch.
Okay. Any other questions? I'll take a motion, please?
So moved.
I need a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nine W?
Nine W is a resolution establishing the scheduled regular city commission meetings for calendar year twenty twenty-five. Mayor Commissioners, this is, uh, as the title states, um, setting the dates for the commission meetings in the calendar year twenty twenty-five. Uh, we did a, an analysis of all major holidays, including religious holidays for the calendar year in twenty twenty-five. And the only conflict that we found was June nineteenth, which is Juneteenth. Um, so the meeting in June will be held instead on June seventeenth, which is the Tuesday before.
Good, so, so the Commissioner needs to be here on her birthday.
Yes. Yes.
May I say one more thing?
Uh, wait, one second, do we have any public speakers?
And have we now put on our calendar for May sixteenth, which is Jewish Unification Day in Sunny Isles? Remember, we had a proclamation last year, this, this current year regarding that.
This is for the commission meetings?
Yeah, this is just.
No, I understand, but you were talking about holidays, and that.
Yeah, no, so what we did is, we went ahead and we looked at all the months in, in the year, just to make sure that none of the meetings that we have normally scheduled on the third Thursday of the month, don't conflict with any of those where we would otherwise either be closed, or would conflict with a major religious holiday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I'll take a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item?
Nine X is a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign or renew all required contracts, agreements, and purchase orders during the recess period from the last city commission meeting in November twenty twenty-four through the first regular commission meeting in January twenty twenty-five, subject to the, after the fact verification at the January twenty twenty-five city commission meeting. Mayor Commissioners, this is a resolution giving the city manager the authority to be able to execute any contracts that are needed to conduct the business of the city, provided that they are first reviewed by the city attorney for legal sufficiency and are approved and ratified by the commission in the meeting in January.
Okay, do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
All right, take a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next item?
Next item is nine Z, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford F-five-fifty Supercab chassis from Hawkeye Truck Equipment Company, Inc.
Wait, didn't we skip nine Y?
We missed nine Y.
Nine Y.
Did I miss, excuse me?
The RFP.
Excuse me, yes, I, I did, so sorry about that, give me one second. Nine Y is a resolution awarding request for proposals number twenty-four oh eight oh one to Dolphin Towing and Recovery, Inc., and Midtown Towing to provide police towing services.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this adds to towing contractors for our police towing for accidents or arrest-type situations.
Any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, take a motion?
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we nine, at nine Z.
Nine Z is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of budgeted funds for the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Ford F-five-fifty Supercab chassis from Hawkeye Truck Equipment Company, Inc.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Commission, this is the purchase of the truck that the Vice Mayor had the discussion about earlier.
Thank you. Do we have any public speakers?
No ma'am.
Since this was an added item, I just want to give anyone an opportunity, okay. I'll take a motion, then?
Motion.
Need a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Marisio, do we have?
Yes, so we have one speaker for the Citizens Forum, Vitaly Falkovich.
Great, thank you. I know you've been here many times, but please, your name and address for the record.
My name is Vitaly Falkovich, located at Avi's Top Press, one sixty-seven, Jersey, Palm Harbor, Miami, Florida. Number one, I wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Stuyvesant on election, you know, people spoke, and they know who they want as their commissioners, number two, number, number one. Number two is that, I think that if you look at Sunny Isles as the safe, I think it's one of the safest communities, Austin, Miami, really honestly. And one, one of the reasons is because you have a city manager who hires an amazing police chief, and if you look at the police department, you see rank and file, it shows a perfect example of how the police department should act, and how the safety should be here, and, you know, as I look at the mayor, you know, you always speak on a safety first, you know, you value your residents, because you know how important the safety, if you look in the other cities, you know, you have a homicide rate in Miami, a lot, there's a lot of homicides in Miami, yet there's nothing going on like that in Sunny Isles, that shows an example of commission and the mayor, and the city manager, and I appreciate guys as a visitor, and having a lot of clients here, and I'm trying to have open business here, and I realize that, you know, this is a perfect example of how the town should run. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those kind words, really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Are there any other speakers?
No ma'am.
Okay, before you have your comment, I, I do want to, again, congratulate Commissioner Stuyvesant on her reelection. We're not back until January, so I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and Merry Christmas, and Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year for those that celebrate. Very nicely what you just said, I, I hope it's safe, and peaceful, and quiet. Thank you. And then we have one last, very important message, so please, Vanessa, don't turn off the feed.
Okay, is, just to remind everyone, all our residents, that we have a runoff election for Commission Seat One, which will be held on Tuesday, December third. Related to that, we were notified by Miami-Dade County that Precinct Two, which is the polling location at Saint Mary Magdalene, will be unavailable for use for this runoff election. So that precinct is being moved temporarily to Gateway Center, which also houses precinct number four. So just for this election alone, Gateway Center will house both Precinct Two and Precinct Four. And I had conversations with the city manager, and we are going to be offering a shuttle service that day for any residents that normally vote at Precinct Two to be shuttled over to Gateway Center. And then the final comment, just because you mentioned it, Mayor, we do have a special city commission meeting scheduled on December second for the swearing-in of Commissioner Stuyvesant.
Okay, so, wonderful.
Will there be activities at Gateway Center on Election Day?
I believe that everything has been canceled for that day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.